So that brings us to the point in our agenda where we turn to public comment, public communication. And let me remind you that during public communications, anyone can speak to the council about city business, including items that are on tonight’s agenda, with one exception, and that relates to public hearings. We don’t accept testimony on those topics where city council will have either held a public hearing in the last 45 days, or we are scheduled to hold a public hearing in the next 45 days. So in order to hear as many people as possible, city council members will not answer questions or make comments about testimony until the end of the public communication process. We’ve set aside 30 minutes in our agenda to hear from the public. If there are more people signed up who want to speak, then we can fit into that 30-minute period. There will be a chance at the end of our business meeting for additional public communication. So with that, I will turn to the sign-in forms, and I’d like to turn first to Heather Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Jones and city council members, for the opportunity to speak. And first, I actually, I want to say an additional thank you to all of you for this recognition that you gave today. That’s really amazing. I think it is important to take a moment and think about the people who have taken their lives or consider taking their lives, so thank you so much for recognizing that. I’m going to be really brief, because I think that what I have to share with you is the words in and of themselves are the most important thing, I think, that I could say tonight. And I’ll say this is fast-breaking news, because it literally was just handed to me about an hour ago. So I’m going to read from a statement that is going to be shared to a whole myriad of people, but all across the Olympia area, folks that have been talking about the People’s House project. So you’ll receive this statement, and all of the different neighborhood associations will receive the statement, business owners and other interested parties will receive the full statement, but this is a portion of that to get to the meat. So bear with me, I have to read it from my phone. Because of our deep commitment to safety and to be in line with current shelter services operating in our community, the People’s House Shelter, once operational, will serve the population that most shelters in Olympia currently serve, in order to fill the gaps created by our loss of the volunteer-run shelters. In addition, after listening to community concerns and much discussion about how to proceed with the People’s House effectively and safely, we have determined we will not pursue a shelter location at the 1011 10th Avenue Southeast. We will, however, continue to actively pursue other safe and viable sites suited to shelter operations. As we proceed with the project, we remain committed to active public engagement, as we work towards community consensus on how to best provide shelter that will address the wants and needs of all in our community. We wish to thank all of you who have taken the time to offer careful, constructive thoughts on how we might move forward in faith and compassion as we pursue shelter options. Public participation is important to us, and so please come to our next event, our next public engagement opportunity. That’ll be on the 16th, so it’s not that long from now, and it’ll be at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Gar Lippo, followed by—
And that will be at the Knox Center, sorry.
Gar Lippo, followed by Bortai Hargrove.
Hi. I’m Gar Lippo. I’m here to speak today about an 800-pound gorilla in the room climate change. Now, the city council has one of the most forward-thinking policies on climate change of any city, of any small city in the United States, and I want to thank both past and current council members for that fact. But there’s one thing you could do that you are not doing now. In 2012, new wind farms sold electricity for $0.04 a kilowatt-hour, which is cheaper than can be provided by new gas turbines or new coal plants. Yet if you look at where the capital investment is going, you’ll see a lot more capital investment going to dirty fossil fuels, to pipelines, to fracking, to coal trains. The city council, the city of Olympia, like all cities, has a lot of investments, and what I’m here to ask you to do today is to divest your funds and your pension funds and your reserves from all fossil fuels. Now, the main reason for asking this is because it would be in line with current policy and with the values of the city of Olympia, but it would also be fiscally prudent and faithful to your fiduciary responsibility. It would be fiscally prudent, because climate change increases food prices, which eats away at the sales tax dollars, since most food is exempt from taxes. It increases healthcare costs, which adds to the labor cost of the city of Olympia. It, in the long run, will hurt property values of coastal property, which will eat at our property tax base. In terms of fiduciary duty, I think you’ll find that whatever the rate of return, and I’m not at all convinced that in the future, the rate of return on fossil fuels is going to be as great as it is at present, but whatever the rate of return it is, fossil fuels also cost retirees healthcare and food, which are costs, which are a big part of retiree cost of living. So if you look at net costs, fossil fuel investments have a negative rate of return for the retirees. So for that reason, I would say it would be, it’s very much in your fiduciary responsibility also to reduce investments in fossil fuel. And I’m sure other people will have other things to say on this, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Bortai Hargrove, followed by Jim Reeves.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Bortai Hargrove. I live at 9822 Dempsey Lane Southwest. As a member of the Olympia Fellowship of Reconciliation’s Climate Crises Group, I’m here to urge the city council to join the municipalities nationwide that have begun the process of divesting their retirement funds from fossil fuels. In Washington, the city of Seattle, and Thurston County have taken the lead in the divestment movement. It is time for the city of Olympia to join them. Portland, Eugene, Berkeley, San Francisco, Richmond, Madison, Santa Fe, Ithaca, Providence, and Cambridge are among the cities that have already begun to divest from the big oil, coal, and gas companies that are fueling the climate crises. This year, I want to remind you, the cumulative CO2 in the atmosphere reached 400 parts per million for the first time. That’s CO2 which may remain in the atmosphere for millennia. Unless we act now, we will not be able to hold climate change to the 2 degrees Celsius beyond which, scientist-worn us, we face catastrophic consequences. The very least that we can do is to refuse to cooperate with the big coal, oil, and gas companies that are destroying our livable climate. I have copies of the letter the Thurston County Commissioners wrote to Jim McIntyre, the Chair of the Washington State Investment Board, directing him to divest the county’s contribution to the co-mingled trust fund from fossil fuels. I also have a copy of the letter Mayor McGinn wrote to the Seattle City Employees Retirement Fund. And I’m just going to deliver these letters to you.
Thank you. Jim Reeves, followed by Ted Cortrun.
Yes, my name is Jim Reeves, also known as Moses. I live here in Olympia. And again, I want to address the issue of concerns of public safety here in the state of Washington and the city of Olympia, and that is the growing potential for a large earthquake and volcanic eruption, Mount Rainier, in the midst of that earthquake. Now, I sat here tonight, and I heard people suggest that this is a problem we should address, drug needles explosion, graffiti on the walls, garbage in the alleys and down by the fountain. We got a problem with global warming and sea rise, and, but really, the biggest problem and the most immediate problem that we really have that threatens millions of lives in this state is a big earthquake and volcanic eruption. And I think there’s a prophecy about that, Rainier erupting in the midst of the big earthquake in the Bible, that book Revelation. Now, scientists recently said, there was a report in a newspaper, that they’re going to try to get a better idea when Mount Rainier might erupt by somehow monitoring the chamber, the magma chamber, that’s underneath a volcano. I don’t know, didn’t see how they were going to do that, but they think that they give pretty good odds that there’ll be a big, big earthquake, and maybe Rainier will erupt sometime in the next, say, 40 or 50 years, but I think in the next 10 or 12 years. So I don’t know why we’re spending so much time worrying about people committing suicide, when we got a big volcano and a big fault line here for potential, for huge earthquake is going to kill almost everyone when it occurs. So I think your priorities are misplaced. You should focus on what threatens most people and how soon, and then try to do something about that to mitigate the loss of life and the destruction of property, and quit wasting resources on stuff that is way down the line as far as a public threat. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ted Nation, followed by Pat Holm.
My name is Ralph T., or Ted Nation. I too am a member of the Olympia Fellowship of Reconciliation confronting the Climate Crisis Committee. I would also like to endorse everything other presenters have made regarding the seriousness and immediacy of the climate crisis and the moral imperative of keeping average temperature rise below 2 degrees Celsius. I also join in asking you to direct the Olympia, that Olympia’s contribution to the Washington State Department of Retirement Systems pension plans be immediately divested from any new investment in fossil fuel companies and be fully divested within five years from direct ownership from any co-mingled trust funds that include fossil fuel equities and corporate bonds. Rather than piling on scientific evidence of the risk we are taking by continuing to invest in fossil fuels, however, I would like to emphasize the financial risk of doing so. The paragraph from the Carbon Tracker Report I quoted in my email letter to you makes the essential points. The Carbon Tracker Initiative is a new way of looking at the carbon emission problem. It is focused on the fossil fuel reserves held by public listed companies and by the way they are valued and assessed by markets. Currently, financial markets have an unlimited capacity to treat fossil fuel reserves as assets. As governments move to control emissions, this market failure is creating systemic risk for institutional investors, notably the threat of fossil fuel assets becoming stranded as the shift to a low-carbon economy accelerates. HSBC Global Research has projected that if necessary government policies are adopted to limit temperature rise to 2 degrees Celsius, it would cut the value of European fossil fuel capitalization by 40 to 60 percent. The impact on the valuation of North America and other fossil fuel companies would be similar. HSBC is the sixth-biggest bank in the world. Their words of caution have since been joined by other banks, the International Energy Agency, the World Bank, and MIT. Thank you for your attention to this important issue. I had intended to submit a physical copy of the Carbon Tracker 2013 report, but had trouble printing it. Instead, I am submitting the first seven pages, including the executive summary, a copy of a summarizing article by The Guardian, and a Grist article. You can read the complete Unburnable Carbon 2013 Report by following the link at the end of my letter to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Holm, followed by Roseanne Rantz.
Yeah, my name is Pat Holm, and I’ve been a resident of Olympia for about 50 years. And I’m also a member of the climate group that’s been talking about divestment. And I really appreciate all the problems that you city council members are dealing with, and it was good to hear about them. But this is something that shouldn’t take that much time to write a, to figure out the letter for divestment, because divestment makes more sense as a prevention to what could happen to Olympia. If we, anyway, we need to stop investing in fossil fuels. And at this time, we don’t have a plan, a regional plan, to address the many problems that could arise from climate change. And climate change could have many impacts on our infrastructure, water supplies, emergency management, food systems, and our economy. And one of those things threatening immediately downtown is sea level rise. And that’s already happening to some extent, and I did bring Andy Hobbs pictures that he showed us last February of the flooding that took place. And I’ll just leave this as kind of a reminder of the flooding that’s already taking place, because of, when a king tide gets together with lots of rainwater, and then our stormwater system is gravity-fed, anyway, the high tide comes, backs up in the city of Olympia, causing some flooding. Anyway, I think we could, I’ve also got the engineered response to sea level rise, which was done in 2011 for the city of Olympia. And there it mentions that it might cost as much as $70 million at that time to build seawalls to save our downtown from flooding. And it seems to me that we need to possibly do both of those things, but my time is up. Anyway, I just wanted to add my voice to divestment. You know, let’s stop investing in fossil fuels and invest in wind that Gar mentioned, which is wind and solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Roseanne Rantz, followed by Eddie Rousher.
Hello, council members. I’m Roseanne Rantz, and I here am, I am here too, to suggest divestment of the stocks that are invested in these companies who, who use their influence and wealth to do, to do actions that are harmful to all of us. I listen to all the things that you have to do, and you have a lot on your plates. But this is something where we have to step across the city lines and think about how this is such a monumental problem that we have to cooperate. I’m hoping that Mayor Buxbaum comes back with some awareness and, among the other regions and countries that he’s meeting with, and they are discussing this problem and deciding how to approach it. Recently, I went to the Love Our Local Fest in northeast Olympia, and I wore a button that day that said, “We are all local.” And it’s true. They say the world is getting smaller, and when you look at what’s happening with the weather changes and the tidal changes, the world is getting smaller, and we have to learn to cooperate, to mitigate these things. And one of the first things we could do would be to divest our money in these companies that are causing a big part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eddie Rousher, followed by Lydia Grossiller.
I received a flyer today that said our east side neighborhood’s at risk, and we need your help, and I think it’s your help we need, but it’s regarding the low-barrier entry shelter located at 1011 10th Avenue, next to multiple schools. And I know the first speaker probably changed this a little bit, but I still think, from the standpoint of me, married with three children, I still think I have a view that I would say that, I feel it’s not a great idea to put in our city of Olympia, and I don’t think it brings positive things to it. So the proposed barrier entry shelter, I think harms the community. It will not help the vulnerable or homeless. It creates an environment to harm those who use it. It creates great risk to those that manage it. It elevates the risk to the adjacent neighborhoods. It creates dangerous situations for kids who play and go to school in those areas. And it sends the wrong message to a population of people that are drug addicts, alcoholics, criminals, sex offenders, people that don’t want to be IDed, and people that don’t like the current services that are available to them. I do not see any positive outcomes coming from this type of project. I will definitely vote for officials that can come up with better solutions to problems for these things and not support a low-barrier entry shelter. So please don’t send the message to Olympia neighborhoods, schools, Thurston County, neighboring states that Olympia wants these type of problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia, I apologize if I’m mispronouncing your name. Lydia, followed by Jennifer Collier.
Could you turn the volume up on the microphone? I have a hard time hearing all the speakers.
Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you for letting me speak. My last name is Gross Close, but nobody ever says it right, so it’s okay. I just want to thank you for what the first speaker said. I live in the east side neighborhood, and I appreciate that you’re choosing a different location. I just have to say, I don’t think that a low-barrier homeless shelter belongs in any neighborhood that’s close to schools, to children, to senior citizens, to families. And I hope that you don’t choose a neighborhood to put it in. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Collier, followed by Jenna Shapetus.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Collier, and I work in social services in downtown Olympia. And I love that I live in a community where my daughter can learn about social issues and grow and become part of the positive change. May 2011, Derek McDougall, Dude Man spoke before city council. He said that if people who are homeless in Olympia continue to be run out by officials or brutalized by police, then like a rubber band, they would snap. And so this is what happened, and now Dude Man is dead, gone forever. This could have been prevented. When I first met Dude Man, he was in front of the grocery outlet. He came inside when he saw me held up at the register scrambling because I forgot my wallet. He happened to buy some food for my daughter, and I didn’t accept, but I never forgot this. It was the kind of person he was. I lost sight of him for a while. When I saw him again, I encouraged him to come into town for supports to meet with his basic needs. He told me he’d been banned from Olympia. I ran into him about a week before he died. He looked worn down and depressed. I bought him lunch with my daughter, and we talked for a little while. He told me he didn’t know what to do anymore. He had nowhere to go. He was cut off from support in Olympia, and he didn’t have a community anymore. He said this was the reason he was down. He told me to call him Derek, not Dude Man. He asked if I would call and gave me his number. I didn’t call, but then I learned that he had hung himself. I heard his number ring in my ears, and I wished I had. So I’m calling out to all of you now, and the time I’ve been working in social services in Olympia, I’ve seen people with problems pushed to the side. The focus often at the top seems to be, how can we hide this problem, or just get rid of it, rather than solve it? Dude Man was a person who had some problems that he needed help solving, but our city of Olympia at times, and our police force at times in Olympia, cut him off. They ostracized him from all his support. Now it’s too late for him. We need to make sure that there are no more people ostracized from their supports in communities. This cannot happen ever again. We cannot give up on finding solutions. And the time I’ve worked downtown, I’ve had five people close to me in the homeless community die in preventable deaths. A year ago, I drove to Grand Rapids to speak at the funeral of a man who had nobody, who also died homeless on the streets of Olympia, cut off from ample support, cut off. Does anybody remember him? Did anyone here know Dude Man? Who remembers people without a name? Two days from now is anniversary, the anniversary of my brother’s death. He also died homeless on the street, cut off from support. Almost 20 years before that, my dad died on the street without support for AIDS. This is personal. It has touched every aspect of my life, work, personal, all. I have long been interested in getting a remembrance tree, similar to what they have in a park up in Seattle. Every time somebody in the community who is homeless dies, their name goes on a leaf in the tree in the park. They’re not faceless, they’re not nameless. They’re given a resting place, a memorial. I recently met with a woman who has Dude Man’s bike. She told me how he wanted to make a patent for his bike trailer so other people could have dignity and choice. She told me she didn’t know what to do with the bike. I don’t know yet exactly how I’m going to do this, but I want to see his bike bronzed as a statue or created into a public memorial, inscribed with his name and the name of every person in our community who dies without a home. I think this would be especially profound in Sylvester Park, but the Artisan Wall is also a great idea. We are not animals, we are humans. We all deserve dignity. The homeless are part of our community, and we need a place to remember those who have died. Will you join me in making this happen, please?
Jenna Shapetus, followed by John Hillgrove.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Shapetus, and I’ve lived in Olympia 13 years. And I’m a single working mother. I have a 12-year-old that attends Reeves Middle School. And the reason I’m here is because I need to express my mistrust in having Wi-Fi in Olympia public schools. I think it’s a public risk to the health and safety of children. Electromagnetic fields specifically affect the human brain. Children are growing, their brain barriers are thin, their brains are softer, and the World Health Organization has referred to Wi-Fi as a Class 2B carcinogen. So we can look at Wi-Fi like smoke. And now that the school board, that the district has implemented Wi-Fi K through 12, incorporating Common Core cyber learning, these children are being habituated to using computers and iPads and eye touches, and they’re harmful. My son started having seizures last year, and it kind of put me in crisis because I’m a single working mother. And I think about all the other families that might not even know why their child is not doing well. I need to keep it together. My partner buried his 13-year-old daughter of a rare case of lymphoma eight years ago. So there’s a point of reference that I’m not going to let go of if there are 15,000 studies proving that electromagnetic fields are harmful to the human genome. So why is a federal learning program doling out eye touches and iPads and Common Core curriculum bringing cyber learning into our schools and a future generation of 9,000 children that might not grow up right, because it’s been proven, there are studies. There was a study in our downtown library two years ago. Sam Milham, Ph.D., M.D., our state’s epidemiologist, conducted a study at his book signing, Dirty Electricity, everyone should read it. At that study, he took metered readings of the high-frequency transients that were in the library with the computers all around. He said, “I’d like to do a study here.” He got funding from some east coast university, and with this study, he impl— And with this study, he implemented filters that would short out the high-frequency transits. So, it's a solvable problem if people were aware of it. And in the course of six months, he took urine samples of seven of 35 different volunteers in what proved to show dopamine levels flatten out with extended exposures of EMF. If that happened to adults, what is happening to our children in school? I want to bring this up to the City Council. I've brought this up to the school board many times and they're kind of listening, but reworking an entire school curriculum would mean a readjustment to our priorities of keeping our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hillgrove, followed by Seth Hutt.
Hello, City Council members. My name's John Hillgrove and I once was homeless also on the streets of Olympia. I kind of slept on the hyperfirm mattress of the concrete out by the YMCA in the little cubby hole with drug and alcohol-free people that watched over each other. And it's often a misconception with the homeless community that they do suffer drug and alcohol issues, a common conception, which some of the police and EMS are probably aware of CIT certification that can distinguish those under the influence of drugs and alcohol and those suffering from mental health issues. I'm hoping more police officers in the Olympia Police Department urge for crisis intervention training and also EMS so lives could be saved and obvious lawsuits could be avoided by the city of Olympia and making bad decisions in the field with respect to EMS and law enforcement. Also, as a person that was homeless and indigent, I'd like to thank Capital Recovery Center and the PATH Program for lending me a third-party voucher to be able to secure housing of my own. This program is essential into providing and empowering lives of disabled Americans such as myself and other indigent populations that suffer from the severe economic times and the employment situations a lot of homeless people have been subjected to. There's various reasons why people are homeless. Some are homeless due to predatory lending practices of financial institutions. Others have been decimated by traumatic events in their lives. And yes, some do self-medicate in certain situations. What I ran into as being indigent and homeless was insomnia. I didn't choose to go to sleep with drugs or alcohol. I didn't choose to self-medicate, but many on the streets do. This is commonly referred to in clinical practice and the recovery model as co-occurring illnesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth Hutt, followed by Mary Russell.
Thanks for letting me speak. Sent out little pictures. Let me print it out for you guys to take a look at. So, okay. Again, hello. My name is Seth Hutt. I live in the Bigelow neighborhood with my wife Jenny and my two children. We moved to Olympia from Seattle last year because we wanted a safe and healthy environment for our children. Our home on Quince Avenue was a dream come true for our family. I came tonight to talk about the homeless people in the downtown core of Olympia. Today, as I was biking with my children to Roosevelt Elementary on the East Side, I noticed a city of Olympia employee checking out a ravine atop of the Bigelow Springs Park. I asked him what was going on. Long story short, he was checking out the remains of a homeless camp recently cleared by the city of Olympia. The camp was located on a neighborhood path, East Bay condos to the west, Bigelow Springs to the south, residential homes in all other directions. The camp was literally right in the middle of our neighborhood. I saw at least five tents, endless tarps, mounds of garbage, clothes, blankets. I saw needles, pills, knives. Clearly, the people had been living in this camp for months. I was stunned by what I saw. The city had very little knowledge to share with me. They stated that because the camp was on private property, East Bay condos, the city was not responsible for the cleanup of any of this dangerous and toxic site. Amazingly, the city also told me they had no record of any crime being committed on the property. Question, isn't illegal dumping, camping, defecating, and the dumping of illegal drug paraphernalia and weapons a crime in this city? Where were these people told just to move along? What I've learned today is that the owner of the East Bay condo association, the owners of the East Bay condo association, will be directly footing the bill for the camp cleanup. Truly, an unfortunate thing for them. What happened to all the camp dwellers? Who were they? Where'd they go? Maybe they're in your backyards now. I hope the City Council can collaborate and find a way to help the city and residents find a way to safely manage the homeless population. It's all around us, every day, on every downtown block, alley, parks, and now securely nestled into our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Russell, followed by Jessica Archer.
My name is Mary Russell and I'm a parent of two and a therapist, and I live in the East Side neighborhood in Olympia. Okay. I am not here to talk specifically about the People's House. My intent is to respond to the conversation that has been going on about the shelter and its correlation to children's safety in the East Side neighborhood. The way this conversation has been going implies that homeless people are more dangerous to children than other people. This is problematic for two reasons. The first is that an entire group of people are being called abusers and pedophiles, which may be true for some of that demographic, but many people in that demographic are good, kind people who would never hurt anyone. And furthermore, many people in that demographic are survivors of abuse or currently fleeing from abuse. The second reason this is problematic is because it takes attention away from where it needs to be. Seventy percent of children who are victims of abuse are abused by people that they know. This means that abuse is happening in our homes, schools, and churches. The most important first step in prevention of child sexual abuse is to speak really honestly about where and how abuse happens. I'm here today as a parent and as a therapist for children survivors of sexual abuse to say, "I agree that we need to protect the children, but scapegoating the homeless community is in direct opposition to challenging, to the challenging and important work of preventing childhood sexual abuse." Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge that we are beyond our 30-minute period. There are about six more people who have signed up. So, council members, would you like to continue at this time? Good. All right. Then I'll call on Jessica Archer, followed by Lady Liberty.
I'm Jessica Archer and I live on, I live in Olympia. I want to talk about the low-barrier homeless shelter proposal, the People's House. The East Side neighborhood is a neighborhood that's been working hard to come back from being considered kind of the wrong side of the tracks. We have great neighbors, neighborhood picnics, community garden, and good parks. We're also really compassionate and we already have about 80% of the shelter beds in the city in or adjacent to our neighborhood. At the same time, we're also a struggling neighborhood. Fifty percent of the kids, almost 50% of the kids at Madison Elementary are low-income and the elementary school also hosts a welcome room for the homeless kids where they can get food and clothes and stuff like that. So, a lot of our neighborhood is already kind of living on the edge and I'm concerned, while the 10th Avenue site for the location, for the proposed location is off the table, I'm concerned about the other locations. A lot of the other locations that were selected by the city staff in the matrix are still really close. Some of them are actually closer to Madison Elementary on 7th and 8th or something like that. They're actually closer. So, I am concerned that schools and the neighborhood were never considered in the criteria for selecting the shelter. The People's House shelter is really a special proposal and I want people to realize this, that this isn't an anti-shelter campaign that our Concerned East Side Neighbors Group is putting on. The only, the models that this shelter comes after are models that really only take place in downtown cores, like downtown DC, downtown Baltimore, downtown Vancouver, BC, not in residential neighborhoods in Olympia. And I'm worried with the effort, which I fully support, to clean up downtown. I don't want the strategy to be to push everyone into the neighborhoods. That shouldn't be our proposal for cleaning up downtown. And that part, that part's really concerning to me. And I do appreciate the efforts, the efforts to clean up downtown, but we can't do it at the risk of our neighborhoods and of our schools. And that's why we want to ask that we really think about with these special shelters, if Olympia is indeed ready to have a shelter that will house sex offenders and hand out needles for folks that are, that's for me, isn't it? Sorry. I just want to ask that we do a moratorium on shelters right now and think about changing the municipal code to really think about where these places should be located, if it should be close to schools with that population.
Lady Liberty, followed by Wendy Katz.
Good evening, Council. It's wonderful to be here. I always enjoy being in a body for a change. You have several proposals, several resolutions tonight, and I bring another. According to all polls, emails, and phone calls to the White House and Congress, it is crystal clear that the vast majority of Americans oppose the idea of bombing Syria. I remember back in 2007 when Congress was deciding to bail out the big Wall Street banks. At that time, on national television, Barbara Boxer, Senator in California, stated that all congressmen were receiving emails and calls, 100 to 1, against the bailout. Yet, your president and your Congress did bail out those big evil banks. And according to Elizabeth Warren, they're even bigger today, 30% bigger. Where's your representative government? Where did it go? Who is really in charge in America? You, the people? I think not. Your founding fathers and mothers must be turning over in their graves. Americans, wake up. Now, again, it appears to be happening. Your federal representatives may well ignore their true constituents, again, to favor the dark hats, the 1%, those bankers and their military-industrial corporations. Hell, even the Pope, for God's sake, knows what's going on. Sorry, I get a little emotional when I'm in the body. Here's the deal. Remember 9/11? The whole world showed support and sympathy for the United States. They said, "We are Americans." Remember that? They were with their flags, "We are Americans." Well, I suggest we do the same. We are Syrians. Tonight, you, the compassionate Olympia City Council, can change the world. You can lead all of America to put the President and Congress back in their rightful place as your servants. Here's the little resolution. We, the City Council of Olympia, wish to inform President Obama and every member of Congress that the city of Olympia, Washington, considers itself to be a sister city of Damascus, Syria. Therefore, let it be known that any bombing by the US military of Damascus, Syria, would be considered a bombing of Olympia, Washington. We, the City Council of Olympia, Washington, therefore, demand that our representatives, the President and Congress of the United States, do not bomb Damascus. Tonight, put your red line in front of our President and Congress and say, "You shall not pass, you shall not bomb Syria." You can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ Johnson, followed by Sarah Pett.
Good evening and thank you for extending your public communication period. I'm sitting here tonight reminded of the complexity and diversity of the issues that you all deal with, much as I did when I was on the City Council, and I appreciate your time. I'm going to bring up a couple of things that you haven't heard about yet tonight. The first is in reaction to what I read over the weekend about the potential for changing the master plan at the Briggs Urban Village. I was on the council when a lot of that work was done, and I really do echo the comments that Mayor Fauch made in the paper earlier this week about the importance of sticking to that plan. There was a tremendous amount of work that went into developing that master plan for the Briggs Village, tremendous community outreach, and especially with the neighborhoods that were most affected by that. And in the end, the City Council on which I served made a decision that was in the best interest of the community. Not in the best interest of the speculative real estate investors who wanted to turn money off of that project, but in the best money, the best interest of the community. And I think you need to hold that really clear as this issue makes its way forward, that that was a decision that was well-reasoned, that was based on the best interest of the community. Yes, they can't fill their retail space now, but let's look to the future. I've been participating in sustainable Thurston for the last almost three years. We know that there's going to be 140,000 to 170,000 more people in Thurston County by the year 2035. We also know that there's serious effort to direct more of that growth into urban areas. If we start to give up a little bit here and a little bit there, it's going to make it really hard to implement that vision of a sustainable community that's coming out of the sustainable Thurston process. It's going to be very hard to save farmland and forests and the things that are special about this community. So, I would just urge you to hold fast to the vision of what an urban village is supposed to be and recognize that the stakes are pretty high and it's not your job to protect real estate investors, it's your job to look to the long-term health and quality of life in our community. Second issue that brought me out tonight is the issue on your agenda later about delaying implementation of the comp plan or adoption of the comp plan. I understand the tremendous challenges and competing demands that the city has. I also am really troubled by this notion. This process began in 2009. If it's delayed until 2014, that will have been five years to go through a planning process. Now, I know the people that I talk to are frustrated by the length of process in the city of Olympia and to the point of saying, "Well, why bother participating? Because nothing ever happens, it's just endless process." And I happen to think that the comp plan draft that's before you is a very good draft that's had a lot of really good community input into it. And I think what people are ready for is to see something happen with it, to see implementation, to see the planning for neighborhood subareas begin, to see new urban agriculture codes, to see all the great ideas that are in that plan put into action. And we all know that's going to take a lot of time and a lot of work for implementation. And I'm very encouraged that this council has talked consistently about the importance of implementing the comp plan. So, I don't want to see this thing get bogged down any further. I don't think that going back to the public about, "Is the vision right? Is where we ought to go now?" I think we need to go back to the public and say, "It's time to roll up our..." I think we need to go back to the public and say, "It's time to roll up our sleeves and implement this plan," and get them to help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Pate, followed by Steve Lyons.
Hello, my name is Sarah Pate. I am a senior librarian in adult services at the Olympia Timberland Library, and I'm also the adult programs coordinator for our branch. And so I'm here tonight to tell you about some of the exciting programs we have coming up for adults. And like all library programs, they're free to the public. This is just a very quick sample of what's coming up in the next few weeks, and I also want to let you know how to find out about our upcoming programs, so you won't have to miss any in the future. Tomorrow, September 11th, at 7:30, thanks to librarian Kelsey Smith, who coordinated the event, we've got award-winning writer Rianna Nargoe and some of her fellow Sister Spit tour mate alumni. She's going to be reading from and signing copies of her second novel, Girls I've Run Away With, and that's a program that's sponsored by the Friends of the Olympia Library. We've also got several upcoming programs for nature lovers. On September 19th, at 7:30, Barbara Morich is going to be in town to talk about her book, The Soul of Yosemite: Finding, Defending, and Saving the Valley's Sacred Wild Nature. Ms. Morich worked for the National Park Service as an ecologist and interpretive naturalist in Yosemite, as well as four other national parks in the western United States between 1982 and 2006, and so we're really lucky to have her coming to the library. And that's actually a program that was suggested to me by a library regular, so I wanted to remind everyone that we're always open to suggestions in terms of programs and materials. The public library belongs to the public, so if we don't have something that you need or want, we are always happy to order it or borrow it from another library system if we can. On September 21st, we have Autumn Roots: Wild Plant Remedies for Optimal Health. Elise Krone is an herbalist and wild foods educator who's passionate about cultivating healing relationships between plants and people, and she's going to talk to us about the powerful medicines and delicious foods that we can find growing all around us, sometimes as weeds. For history lovers, Peter Reed will be back by popular demand on September 25th at 7:30 to show recently restored films of 1926 logging operations in our area, and he's also going to talk about his recently released book, Schaefer State Park. Also coming back to the library on September 26th at 7:30 is Uyin Nicole Duong, and she will be speaking about her award-winning novels, Mimi and Her Mirror and Postcards from Nam. Copies of her books are going to be available in both English and Vietnamese. She's a Fulbright scholar, an attorney, and a really great speaker, so you don't want to miss her. But this is just a small sample of the things coming up, and so come to the library to pick up an adult programs booklet. You can like the Olympia Timberland Library on Facebook and choose to get notifications to get updates about upcoming programs for all ages, and you can also sign up to get quick email alerts for all adult and youth programs by calling in or stopping by the information desk to find out how via our online events calendar. And the last thing I'll tell you is that September is library card signup month, so come down and get a new card if you need one.
Thank you. Steve Lyons, followed by Emmeline Mead.
Okay, what you should be looking at here is a geodata map of an area off of the 1,200 block of Henry Street and the 1,400 block of 13th Avenue Southeast. I want you to take special note of this dead end. What I've done is I've circled 1402, 13th Avenue Southeast, and if you notice, the dead end that runs behind it, that is actually only how far sent, uh, Henry Street goes. It doesn't continue all the way through this wetland area, but what I have found out is that these maps are layered, and that by stripping away layers on these maps, you can reconfigure them just about any way that you want. 1402, 13th Avenue, the last notification I had on it was that no building permit was going to be issued for that property until the stream issue was resolved. And to see Todd stam about it, in 2012, when that construction was going on, my curiosity got the best of me. I had to look at the file to see what was going on and how they got away in conjunction and cooperation with the Planning and Development Department with building on that lot. That brings us to page two. On page two, you've got 1402 is the red rectangle there, and you don't have to look very hard to notice an entire wetland has completely vanished by stripping away layers on, on these geodata maps here. Last month, I visited the Planning Department for my own personal means, and I thought originally that that stripping away of that wetland had been done just so they could get a permit. They've already allowed, in cooperation with the Planning and Development Department, to build three homes here already, almost to completion off a second set of plans. I wasn't surprised to see a wetland disappear. But after discussing my own personal matter with the Planning and Development Department, two of them, one of them said that they felt that there was something in the past that had, that this area had, there was concerns about this area. So what he did was punched up on the computer, this particular area, and what, and he got the same results as what was put in the files for 1402, which means that entire wetland has been removed from the city database. And I think it's important to start out by answering a couple of questions here. Number one, just exactly when and where did that entire wetland disappear to? And the next question is, who is responsible for removing that critical area from the city's database? And when I get those answers, when I get answers to those questions, I'm sure we can proceed further. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Emmeline Mead.
I'm also here to speak about Derek Dudeman McDougall. Specifically, I'd like to speak about how he was banished from Olympia about a year before he died. I've been talking to a lot of people about this, and a lot of people are feeling that there's a, sorry, there's people talking over there, that there's a correlation between these events, that being pushed out of town and cut off from his street family, cut off from his friends, cut off from resources in Olympia, took a heavy toll on him, and might have influenced his death. Another theme among the people that I've talked to about this issue is that no one really seems to know how this banishing works. It seems to be a mysterious process. I think the city, the police, whoever's qualified to speak on this topic owes us some answers. Shed a little light on it. You know, on what grounds can someone be banished from Olympia? Who makes that decision? What laws or ordinances apply? What oversight exists? What recourse would a person have to reverse or appeal the decision and be able to come back to town? I mean, I just, it just seems kind of like a Wild West, run people out of town on a rail sort of thing. I don't really know much about it, so I'd like someone to speak about it. If you can't guess, I think it's, you know, pretty outrageous, and I want it to stop, but I'll probably be back to speak about that another time. I'd also like to support Jennifer's proposal for the Public Art Memorial to honor the lives and acknowledge the deaths of the people without homes who die in Olympia. You know, like it or not, these people are part of our community. Some of you may be aware of the census data showing that around 80% of the homeless people are from Thurston County, and roughly half of those are from Olympia, so these are our people. They're part of our community regardless of where they sleep. That should be publicly affirmed, and maybe such an affirmation would help counter some of the prejudice that pushes them to their deaths in the first place. Derek was well-known and well-liked in Olympia, and, and then Lacy, actually, after he was pushed there, and he'll be missed by a lot of people, and I think that his iconic bike trailer would be the perfect forum for such a memorial to take, so I'd like to see some support for that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Paul Drumheller, and I've lived in Olympia for a while. I'm just going to let you know, your headlights, your lights overhead are bright for me, which is why in here I would normally wear one pair of sunglasses. Outdoors, I wear three to five pairs of sunglasses on days. What I'm talking about are bicycles and sidewalks and pedestrians in downtown core of Olympia. I've asked several police officers who've told me there are no rules and regulations for bicycles in the downtown core, other than that if I get hit by one, I can sue them. I've been told that there's no speed limit in the downtown core for bicycles. I have been told that there's no direction of traffic, and it gets to be irritating after a while when you're walking along. I have bicyclists come up on this side and this side, passing me. I have bicyclists coming this way, I move this way, I have one over here. This is a little bit ludicrous in my mind. I have friends in other states who ride bicycles, who say that bicycles and sidewalks do not go together, especially in a business area. If all the sidewalks in downtown Olympia were 10 to 20 feet wide, wide, it'd be one story, one thing. But we have places where sidewalks are four, three to five feet wide, and the other issue comes up with sidewalks are that sandwich boards are placed everywhere, so therefore you're in the process of dodging bicyclists, trying to avoid the sandwich boards. And then the last thing is the dogs that get tied up outside of businesses, cafes and such, and you trip over their liches while you're trying to avoid the bicycles. In 2005, I started, I learned how to use a white cane. I'll tell you something, the white, a white cane, at least in a crosswalk, the blind have absolute right of way on both sides of the street. They're like a school bus with the red lights on. On sidewalks, I'm told, watch where you're walking by bicyclists. And I find that to be offensive after a while, and I get tired of constantly wondering if I'm going to get hit, because I don't have eyes in the back of my head. So if there are regulations for bicyclists, it'd be nice if they'd be enforced. If there are not regulations of any kind in the downtown core, at least it'd be nice if there would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a proposed resolution here for the city of Olympia. I'd like to read briefly.
Would you state your name?
Alex Day.
Thank you.
Olympia City Council Resolution Designating December 21st as National Homeless Person's Memorial Day. Whereas the winter poses extreme hardship and danger for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income men, women, and children in Olympia, and whereas the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal of mind concerning the commitment to this, of this community, to love and care for the homeless in Olympia. And whereas December 21st has been designated National Homeless Person's Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council, and is so recognized by cities nationwide. And whereas in this season of open-handedness and kindness, citizens of Olympia are encouraged to commit themselves to fostering compassion and concern for all brothers and sisters, especially those who are hungry, poor, and homeless. And whereas in honoring the lives of those who have died on the streets, the urgency of ending and preventing the issue of homelessness is kept a community vanguard, as is the city's collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now, therefore, resolved by the city, by the council of the city of Olympia, Washington, that we hereby declare December 21st as National Homeless Person's Memorial Day. In recognition of the people who have died without shelter in and around Olympia, and we hereby ask all citizens to take a moment of silence and remembrance, and encourage our citizens to support all local efforts to reach a positive and humane solution to homelessness in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd turn now to council member comments. Yes.
Thank you. To Heather in the People's House, thank you so much for, for listening to the neighborhood's needs and really addressing those by talking about the location and moving the location, and also about looking at the model type. I really appreciate that. I also really appreciate that you are going to continue to try and help our community and meet some needs by focusing on those existing beds we've lost and trying to replace those this winter. So thank you very much. And really, to the, to the People's House and to the east side and downtown neighborhoods, thanks to you, we're beginning to have that conversation that we're really going to need to have in order to, to find a successful solution to our challenges. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing all of you on the 16th at the NOx, at NOx, at 7 o'clock. So thank you to all the neighborhoods and the People's House.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Jones. I have a question, actually, to our city manager about the issue that the Climate Crisis Group brought up about divestment. How would that work, and would that be something that we could do?
I think so. Ms. Hargrove provided a copy of the letter from the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, and just to be clear, the city of Olympia does not control our retirement investments, it's controlled by the state of Washington. So what I believe Thurston County did in their letter is urge the state investment board to divest in fossil fuels. So if the council's interested, we could, I believe, do a letter similar to this, urging them to consider divestment.
Okay, thank you. That's an interesting idea, and I'd like to maybe pursue that at a later point. To, is it Jenna Saporis? I'm, I'm not sure if I got the name right. I, you know, she was concerned about electromagnetic rays being harmful, and I would strongly encourage her to talk to our local Department of Health, the county, who are also the, happen to be the county commissioners, as well as continuing to talk to the school district about, about those issues. It's really not something, from my understanding, the city council really has any jurisdiction over, but I do think that it's an issue that it's, I think, really important. TJ Johnson, I really appreciate your bringing us up to date on the history of Briggs Village. I was actually involved peripherally on that, you know, back in the day when that happened, and my memory coincides exactly with yours, that this was something that was very carefully worked out through considerable community input and working actually with the people who wanted to develop Briggs. So it's really something that I'm glad you sort of reminded the council of, of some of the decisions that were made then and why they were made. So I think we should take that into consideration as we consider that proposal. Our librarian, oh, there she is, yes, Sarah. The library is really one of those gems of the community, and, you know, people say the library's old-fashioned and everybody's going on the internet. Well, I think what Sarah brought home to us is, is how much the library is a vital part of this community, and, and how they offer all kinds of things that are tremendously useful to the community as a whole, and are really a valuable public resource. And frankly, I myself love actually holding a book as opposed to an iPad, and I, my understanding is that even so, the library also does electronic books and is lending electronic books to people, so that, that's a possibility. And then to Emmeline Mead, I really, I would be curi, I'm actually curious too about the, how the banishment issue works, so I'd like to know more about that, so.
I have, I have never heard of a person being banished from their friends or family. I'm just, I'm perplexed, so if I know of anybody who has an idea, then.
I can know.
Oh, maybe Tom knows how people get banished.
There is a process, depending upon the, the type of behavior and the type of violations that go with, you know, an arrest, and there, it's a court process, so it would have to be an order from the municipal court judge that somebody would have to refrain from a certain area, and it could be defined an area in downtown, potentially. So, so there is a process that would have to be reviewed by the judge and a request, and so there is a, the, a banishment process from certain areas.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification, and, and I'd actually like to find out more about that, and maybe you can also ask, Emmeline can ask some more about that to, to city staff, is how, how that process works. I'd actually like to know a little bit more about that. And then Paul Drumheller, as a bicyclist myself, I'm really concerned about the issue of, of bicycles being on sidewalks. That really is a problem. I think they belong on, that's why we have bike paths, and I would actually like to ask our city attorney to address that a little bit too. I believe there are some rules, but I'm not sure what they are, so if you could clarify that, that might be helpful.
Yes, we've adopted the state model traffic ordinance, and there are provisions in that that would prohibit riding a bicycle in a, on the sidewalk in a business district, which I would assume would be in our downtown. So there, if you're outside of a business district and you're riding on a sidewalk, you can, but then you have to yield the right-of-way. But if there's a, in a business district, there's not supposed to be people riding on the sidewalk for that very reason. It's just such a populated area, and there's a lot of traffic.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, and maybe that's something we can, and again, I'm concerned about people who are disabled and, and who have sight difficulties, that this is, can be a pretty serious matter for them, because they really can't protect themselves in a way that, that folks without disabilities can. So maybe that's something we can look into too. Thanks for clarifying.
Councilmember Rowe.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Jones. Thanks to everyone for coming tonight. This was quite a diverse crowd and a lot of issues to tackle. I, I want to thank the, all of the folks who came, the climate, the climate crew, thank you for speaking up. I also wanted to acknowledge Jenna, is it Shabadi's, with, in terms with the Olympia School District, is she still here? She may have left. But I, I know that Councilmember Langer suggested going to county commissioners. I would suggest going to the state level as well. I mean, if they're being handed out statewide, it may be something more of a health legislative issue to tackle, and, and really do see what the implications, implications are for kids who are growing up with these electronics around them. We, we actually don't know what the long-term effects could be. So I appreciated her bringing that forward, and I would encourage her to, to go to the state as well. I also have a question for, oh, a comment on, on John Hillgrove, who talked about if our police are aware or have training in terms of drug and, drug and alcohol abuse versus mental health issues, and I don't know if Steve Paul, if you could comment on that.
I can, and actually Lieutenant Lauer may be able to add more, but I believe that, I know that the crisis intervention training is longstanding part of our training package for Olympia, and I would expect that most if not all of our police officers actually have CIT training, and I don't know if Paul wants to add anything to that or not. Is that accurate?
Sure. Come on, microphone. All right, I'll get this right here. So approximately 12 years ago, the City of Olympia Police Department started down through the CIT process. We were one of the first agencies here in the state of Washington to start with a training program, 40-hour training program, which most of the agencies throughout the state of Washington have began to model after. We have had one of the first, like I said, first models, we fell on, on the shoulders of Seattle PD that started doing this. And so this program has been around and a hallmark of our police department for quite some time. We have, and I'd have to double-check the numbers, but probably two-thirds, if not three-quarters of our officers have been through the 40-hour training course. And currently, the models and the training for the CIT, I keep using CIT, the Crisis Intervention Training, which is, what I'm referring to is taking place at the Basic Law Enforcement Academy at this point. Many of the sessions, I guess, or training seminars are modeled and now put into the actual academy based on some of the stuff that OPD itself had a big hand in it to begin with, so we're out there doing it.
Thank you. I have some additional comments. I, I wanted to address Seth Hutt from the Bigelow neighborhood, who had concerns with the, is he still here? I'm just wondering, he was the gentleman that was concerned with the East Bay condos and all the garbage and things left behind. Mr. City Manager, is it the case then that if it is on private property like that, that he is responsible for the cost of all the cleanup when the, the shelter is?
Yes, that's the case.
Okay.
If it's on public property, we will clean it up, but we expect private proprietors to manage their properties, so.
Okay, so he would have had to call in and.
Didn't think it was his property. Sounds like it belonged to East Bay condos, not him, but.
That's what I meant, East Bay condos, yeah, okay. And then I just wanted to add to Paul Drumheller's comments on bikes. I would like to include skateboards. I would go downtown, and having skateboards whizzing by at a high speed, I think, is just as dangerous as having bikes, and I don't know what our ordinance is on that, but I'm assuming we, we aren't allowed to have skateboarders.
We'll check, we'll let you know.
Okay. And, and I think that is all. I'm, oh, I think Jessica Archer's gone. I, I appreciate her comments about the low-barrier shelter, the ongoing conversations that everyone is having, and I think it was Councilmember Hankins who was saying that it actually is opening the door to much more productive conversation amongst the community, as painful as it is. We all care about the community, we all care about the homeless, and we all care about our city. We want our downtown to be successful. And I am just wondering about slowing down the whole low-barrier concept and having some further discussion on what would go into it, just the whole concept of it and the parameters, and I think she suggested a moratorium on shelters for now, but I, and looking at zoning issues, but I just think that we need a much more thorough conversation on what a low-barrier shelter means to Olympia and in Olympia. So I just think that due to the public outcry and concern that potentially the citizens of Olympia want to have a further conversation about this, so. Did you find out about skateboards?
We did, we did. Skateboards are also prohibited on downtown sidewalks.
I thought so. Okay, so. And thank you again to everyone who came forward tonight. It was really a very informative and interesting evening.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Jones. I'd like to echo the comments about a really diverse and actually kind of exciting public comment period. If we could spend more time hearing these kinds of issues as broadly, I would enjoy it. So a couple of quick things. Thank you to Heather Moore from Capital Recovery for delivering light-breaking news here. I appreciate the People's House Project's commitment to open and robust dialogue going forward, and I look forward to seeing the outcomes of that conversation. I'd turn to the council and say, can we just direct staff to bring us a letter around, around divesting from climate change and check that off our list as, with consensus?
I'm not sure if we all know enough about that to just sign off. I'd feel more comfortable if we had a little bit more of a briefing than just, I mean.
So I'll leave that to our agenda-setting team to see if that can fit in the conversation. And then the last item is, thank you to Paul. I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name written down correctly, but I'm wondering if the conversation, I've had, this is the third time in a week and a half I've had people talk to me about bicyclists in the downtown core, and wanted to, you know, there are a couple of models I've seen around the country, particularly in communities our size with really great downtowns, that actually are a dismount zone in the, in the, in the core, the busiest section of downtown. It's not easy to ride on the streets of the downtown core, let alone on the sidewalks. And so I'd be interested if you guys would be willing to refer to BPAK, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, to take a look at whether that's an appropriate model for Olympia.
Yes. Councilmember Langer.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Actually, I think that the dismount zone is actually a really bad idea. I think that, that bicycles belong on the street like any other vehicle does, and as long as we follow the rules of the road, as, as well as, as cars, we have just as much a right to be on the regular road as anyone else. I don't think, and we, bicycles clearly don't belong on the sidewalk, especially when people are, you know, a little, like a two-year-old is going on the sidewalk, I'm not going to worry about it too much, but when adults travel on the sidewalk, I do see that as a problem. So I'm, but bicycles need to follow the rules of the road. They need to do like everybody else does when you're on a public roadway, and I ride my bicycle on a regular basis through downtown, and, and I think we should encourage people doing more bicycling, not less, but doing it responsibly.
If I may, Mayor Protem Jones?
Sure.
And so that's a great point, and one I didn't think of, because I'm not, obviously, an avid cyclist, but the, but the.
And I was starting.
But the, you know, one thought would be then maybe to open that up, to ask the BPAK to look at whether there's some educational opportunities. We found out that it is illegal to ride on the sidewalks, and maybe just some signage and public conversation could help that problem. We shouldn't be having those kinds of issues on our pedestrian right-of-ways.
Councilmember Rowe.
So do we have any signage up in downtown Olympia that says no skateboarding on sidewalks or biking?
I don't know, I don't know if we do. We could look at that. I wasn't clear, is that part of the referral to look at signage, or is it a question before you make a referral, or?
I think we should make a referral to BPAK to just look into the, the whole idea, not just necessarily.
I don't know if we have any signage, and look at, Rich, I don't know if we have. We don't think so, but we can get back to.
So a referral for BPAK to look into biking abuse on the sidewalks? I just think it needs to be, you know, just maybe some PR work for the public to know that you can't ride on, maybe they don't know, some of the kids.
More discussion on the referral? Do we have consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Councilmember, or Cooper, are you complete?
That's done, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Langer.
Yeah, I apologize, there were so many things here, I left one out. This was the comment, the item that Steve Lyons brought about the stream issue, and I do believe, I, I know the wetland that he's talking about that got taken off, somehow didn't appear on one of the two maps, and I'd actually like to find out a little bit more about that, because I think that's, you know, if, you know, that, I hope that's not a wider problem, but I definitely think we should make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen when we do have a legitimate wetland that is properly protected.
Yeah, we'll find out if it was a real wetland, if it should have been on the map, and if it got taken off, why.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you all. I just have a few concluding comments. I certainly don't want to restate many of the things that have already been said, but I, I do want to say that I'm very much looking forward to what the advocates for the shelter that was proposed over on 10th Avenue will bring forward. I'd, I'd like to see the full statement when it's available. But more than that, I feel as though we've had a very helpful dialogue, and it hasn't always been comfortable, but the level of participation on this issue has, I have been impressed, and I feel as though we've been listening to each other. I want to commend the folks with Interfaith Works for being willing to listen to the community and change their direction, and I look forward to the next steps that come forward out of that process. I also would encourage folks to attend the forum on the 16th and voice your opinions about how this community should move forward in trying to respond to our homeless community. So thank you all for participating. Just one more comment to the folks with Fellowship for Reconciliation or other climate crisis group representatives. I'd just say that we, we are open to hearing more from you. If you'd like to submit some materials, that would be most welcome. I know that our staff has begun looking at this issue already, and I think that the council members clearly are, are asking for more information, so. Thanks to everyone for being here. I am glad that we extended our comment period to, to hear from all of you, so thank you so much.